It's time to wake up. 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 At the break of dawn and it's on again, baby, get ready to climb back on the land. Come on, man, shake the dust off the food. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, one is your opportunity for turning a page. Today's a new chapter, right to fly, make it end with the win, keep it all you got. First, you gotta rise with alert in the blood, get the dirt from your eyes and work for the work. It is done, cause we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, don't forget snooze, it's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick, come on, tick tock, tick, let's go. Tick tock, tick, come on, tick tock, tick. You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away, but come on, let's get it going, don't make the late. So bring me along and lift your arm high, like Georgia, we'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with the step, you'll get in it in a second, if you're winning like you never did it when you overslept. So write this minute, get right with it.
Good morning. This was, this is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is January ninth. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Marcus Jerkins of New Pilgrim Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Carol Clark. If you're willing and able, please stand.
To our mayor and his staff, to the president of this legislative body and those who are esteemed members of this council, let us pray. We thank you, oh God, for waking us up this morning and granting us this privilege to come to you. We come to you, oh God, on behalf of this city. And we come to you, God, on behalf of this body. As we come to you, oh God, we thank you that you are a God of righteousness. Oh God, send your righteousness. Oh God, let it flow, oh God, like waters and like a mighty stream. And we pray, oh God, also that you would allow peace to reign in our city. We thank you, oh God, that the Lord Jesus said, blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God. Let us, oh God, be those who are used to bring forth peace in the land. And wherever we go, God, bring forth prosperity. And we also pray, oh God, for joy. Let us, oh God, from heart to heart and breast to breast, be able to share joy with one another so that others may share in the gratitude of the great blessings we have received. But with all those blessings, oh God, give us a mind to work and a mind to build and a mind to do what you've called us to do. And we thank you for all these things, oh God. We thank you for it now, amen.
Madam Clark, at this time, could we have the roll call?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Good morning. Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Smitherman. Good morning. Council President Pro Tem Alexander. Good morning. And Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
At this time, we have consideration of the minutes of the August first, August eighth, and August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve those as written.
Move the item.
We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That motion passes. The minutes are not ready for the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three through December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and January second, twenty twenty-four meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor.
Hey, good morning, everyone. I get the chance to see you all last year, but I think there's a grace period, I don't know, you can say happy new year, so happy new year to everyone. And by the way, your digs, I like your digs, they're nice. It's my first time back in here. You did not tell me, you did not warn me, it would be so bright. But it looks good, so it's really good to see everyone and good morning to the public as well. I want to start out with some good news. We ended the year talking about that food festival that kicked off last year. You all, along with your constituents in your individual districts and collectively as a community, got together to make sure we got the national attention we needed. I'm happy to say that USA Today, ten best readers' choice award ranked the Birmingham Food Plus Cultural Festival the number three best new festival. And so that's kudos to all of us, but a special shout out to all those involved to make this new festival possible. As you recall, the festival launched in October of twenty twenty-three, and it celebrated Birmingham's culinary scene. And it is the only one in the state of Alabama to actually make the list, so it's a big deal. And just a heads up, date for the next Food Plus Cultural Festival will be September nineteenth through the twenty-second of this year, twenty twenty-four. Again, that's September nineteenth through the twenty-second. And there's information already on the website at bhambfoodplus.com. Again, that's bhambfoodplus.com. So again, thank you for those who participated in allowing this to be a success. January, as many of us know, is a very special month for many of the Divine Greek Non-Greek letter organizations. Just this past weekend, for my own fraternity Alpha Phi Alpha, Alpha Roll Chapter, which is at Morehouse College, celebrated its centennial one hundred years. But I want to talk about the, all of the Divine Non-Greek letter organizations. As you know, many are celebrating more than a century since their founding on the principles of service, scholarship, brotherhood, as well as sisterhood. Last week, on January fifth, the Men of Capital Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated celebrated their one hundred and thirteenth Founder's Day. Today is the one hundred and tenth Founder's Day for the Men of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. And on Saturday, January thirteenth, the Ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated will celebrate their one hundred and eleven Founder's Day. I would like to wish a happy Founder's Day to the members of these organizations who serve at City Hall as well, as well as across the city of Birmingham. I would like to also give a special shout out to my D nine sisters, which include Crystal Smitherman, who was a member of Delta Sigma Theta, and Council Pro Tem Wardine Alexander, who was a member of Alpha Capital Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And AKA will celebrate their one hundred and sixteenth Founder's Day on Monday, January fifteenth. Speaking of Monday, January fifteenth, the city of Birmingham offices will be closed. This is in due observance of the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior holiday. And with the exception of the Police Department, Fire Department, and nine-one-one, as well as the A.G. Gaston Motel, all other city offices will be closed. Several of our public facilities I've just mentioned will be open, which includes the Gaston Motel. But feel free to reach out to them directly for the MLK Day hours of operation, as well as to share with you all, counsel, that the city has composed a list of MLK events taking place around the city. And you can find more detail about those events at birminghamal.gov/MLK-day-events. And whoever made those dashes, we're gonna talk after this. Also, residents who typically receive household garbage pickup on Monday, you will not receive pickup Monday. Your makeup service day will be Tuesday, January sixteenth. But as I shared with the team yesterday, for those who, Trash Day would typically be the sixteenth Tuesday. Your trash won't be picked up Tuesday because that's a makeup day for Monday. So those who will receive, usually receive their pickup on Tuesdays, will receive pickup Wednesday. And so due to the holiday makeup schedule, there will be no recycling pickup on Wednesday, the seventeenth. And Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, will be the only curbside recycling pickup for the month of January. Don't beat me up, Ms. Abbott. The regular scheduled recycling pickup on the first and third Wednesdays of the month will resume on February, so I just gave you this a little. Yes, ma'am. So the Department of Planting Engineering and Permits will continue Coffee with Code Enforcement. The next one will take place this Thursday, January eleventh. It will be from ten a.m. to twelve, oh, ten a.m. to noon. The first one was over at Tedsfield, I think Memorial Park. This one will be at Don Hawkins Recreation Center. That address is eight nine two zero Roebuck Boulevard. What I can tell you from some anecdotal information and feedback I got, one attendance was very high. And residents appreciating the opportunity to sit down and talk with concerns, questions, and learn more information about how code enforcement works, so that's been helpful. Also, the information I've shared with you all, the end of the year related to the officers engaging, I'll be able to provide you this month, how that's already going, just within the first week and first few weeks of this year. Things you all desire and need related to code enforcement, I think you'll be pleased. So I look forward to sharing that information with you as well. A note regarding uniform cart delivery. We'll continue this year as we did the last quarter of twenty twenty-three, sharing this information on repeat. But all single-family residents are now under the same uniform cart system. Businesses located on residential waste routes needing up to two carts in multifamily dwelling units of four or less may apply for carts at a fee per cart. And any businesses needing more than two carts, or any apartments, multifamily dwellings needing more than four carts, will no longer be serviced by the city of Birmingham. We understand we have some multifamily dwellings that have refused to comply, so we are reissuing letters. And after that, we will go strictly on enforcement punitive side if we can't get, I would say, the landlord, landlords, landlord owners, landlord slash owners to actually comply. Because I think you all have seen some people just not complying, so I think it's time to level up. But we'll start with reissuing of the letter we've already sent about, here's your responsibility as the actual landlord or owner of these multifamily sites with four or more. As well as the city of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates online at birminghamal.gov/bulktrash. At this time, Mr. President and Counsel, I would like your colleague, Wardine Alexander, to come down, as well as Board Member Walt Wilson, who represents District Seven, to come up, as well as Jason Meadows, President of the Birmingham Board of Education, to come up, along with leadership at Winona High School. As these lovely ladies who are seated behind me stand and come up as well for a special presentation. So, Mr. President and Counsel, in a minute, I'm gonna turn it over to Wardine Alexander. But today, we are joined by some very special and elite young athletes that we see here. And so I would like to ask the Winona High School Lady Dragons, their coaches are here, school leadership is here as well. The Winona High School Lady Dragons, if you did not know everyone, are the twenty twenty-three Alabama High School Athletic Association 5A Flag Football State Champions. Well, I think Washington should have put some of them in the game yesterday, but we could talk about that later. And so I'm gonna step aside, counsel, because I would like Wardine Alexander to do the honors of the remaining of this special presentation. Madam Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. We are so excited to be here today, and today is a special moment for me. You know I'm all things Winona. And so I'm just excited for the accomplishment that these young ladies made by winning this championship. Back in the horse and buggy days, when I was a student at Winona High School, in nineteen seventy-two, they enacted Title Nine, which brought about ways to eliminate discrimination of athletics based on sex and gender. And so we've come almost fifty years from now, and we see the accomplishments that these young ladies have made on the field, as well as in the classroom. As Mayor Woodfin has already stated, these young ladies are champions. And we know the great star on the hill is where champions are made. And so it is just my honor today to bring forward this resolution to honor the members of the Winona High School Girls Flag Football Team for their accomplishments, both academically and athletically. It's the value of teamwork, fair play, and competition. We've afforded many opportunities to these young ladies as they have gone on the field and displayed their prowess, their championship, and their great skills for winning this honor. So counselors, I would like to ask for unanimous consent for this resolution of honor for these young ladies and their coaches.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Thank you, and now the resolution?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Thank you very much. Ladies, again, I'm just so excited that Mayor Woodfin and I have had this opportunity to bring you before the council and the members of the public just to say thank you for the work that you've done. And now I let Principal Goldsmith and Coach, if you have anything you'd like to say. And we would like to ask young ladies if you would give us your name and your grade. And I don't know if you have positions in flag football, but we'll just give us so many of you. But Coach, if you want to say something.
I'd like to say, we're just glad to be here, it's a blessing to have these young ladies come out and work so hard for this accomplishment, being the first ones in Birmingham to bring back a state championship. I also like to say I appreciate the city of Birmingham, giving me a chance to start some flag football leagues around the city to grow as a coach. And I think that's a big part of it too. And my administration, being second to none in supporting everything that we've done as far as practices and just being in preparation for the season. So thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the city council, the mayor's office, our councilperson for allowing us to have this honor. But I also want to let you know that the historic Winona High School, the bright star on the hill, is the first. And what I told these ladies, we talked about ring time, right? Ring time is coming, but we are also asking for support. So with that, I want to thank you guys, girls, I'm very proud of you. I want to thank for all the support that our Board of Education has given us, that our city council has given us to allow the flag football and Title Nine to be really a true thing, a true thing here in Birmingham. Because as a father of a female athlete, I know how hard it is to get the support that you would get. And I know that here, we get all the support that we need because right here, you have proof. You have a state champion, not just five A, but they represent five A, four A, three A, two A, and one A. So they had to play everyone in the state to win. So once again, thank you.
Thank you, and again, we're very excited. Would our board representative, would you like to just say something for the girls? We're glad to have you here today, Walt, come on.
So, that's what we know the thing, y'all, y'all wouldn't understand. Just congratulations to you all, the entire Winona community is so proud of you all. You are the first Birmingham city school to win a championship in flag football. And most importantly, you're the only Birmingham city school to win a football championship this year. So congratulations, ladies, Counselor Alexander, the mayor. After the championship parade, Dr. Goldsmith, y'all eating T-bones? We gonna feed you good, congratulations. And remember, Winona's not just a school, it's a community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So ladies, if we could get you all in then, if you'll just exit out after you give your name, and then we'll let you recognize, we're gonna recognize you. Yes, your name and your, what grade you're in.
My name is Samarian Franklin, I'm in the left. And I'm QB.
My name is, my name is Michaela Williams, I'm in eleventh grade and I'm a wide receiver.
My name's Sierra Clark, I'm twelfth grade and I'm all around.
My name is Remaja Walton, I'm in eleventh grade and I play corner.
My name is Kamai Williams and I'm in the twelfth grade and I'm a receiver, wide receiver.
My name's Kiera Clark, I'm in the twelfth grade and I play all around.
My name is Kira Ringstaff, I'm in the twelfth grade and I'm a wide receiver.
My name's Tamaya Bruce, I'm in ninth grade and I was safety.
My name is Lekiri Obana, I'm in the tenth grade and I'm a rusher.
My name is Summer Johnson, I'm in eleventh and I'm a rusher.
My name, Jalen Jackson, I'm in the tenth grade and I'm a strong safety.
My name's Camaria Deloche, I'm in eleventh grade and I play linebacker.
My name is Meija Clark and I'm a wide receiver and I'm in twelfth grade.
My name is Caitlin Jones, I'm in eleventh grade and I'm a strong safety.
My name is Stacy Kea and I play wide receiver.
My name is Deja Tinsley, I'm in the eleventh grade, I play strong safety.
My name is Kenzie, I'm in eleventh grade and I play linebacker. Go Dragons!
I'm Cedric Lane, I'm the head coach, and I'm very proud of these young ladies.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem Alexander.
I just wanted to say one thing.
Counselor Moore has, would like to say a few words.
Yeah. Look, I know, I know they walking out, y'all getting ready to take your picture. I just wanted to say congratulations to the young ladies. I also wanted to say thank you to the coach, and a big shout out to Principal Goldsmith. He probably does not remember me. I was a student at Huffman High School back in the day when we had the circle buildings. And I remember you being a strong force in that school and really motivating success. And so it's still playing out today, so thank you, thank you for the work that you're doing. Yes, sir.
Counselor Tate.
Yes, thank you, Ms. President. I want to congratulate the ladies, also, I want to tell you guys, I'm digging your hairstyles also. And you have really set the stage for what female athletes are. So keep striving and doing the best. And to the coach, Beak Walt, Mr. Meadows, you guys have done a great job. I know Pro Tem is all Winona, but I'm all Red Raider.
Counselor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm really excited about this accomplishment. I think this is just, what, the second year that flag football has been, third year that flag football has been offered in Alabama high school sports. And so, especially to be first, man, put their first trophy in a Birmingham trophy case, so y'all will always be up there. Got to shout out Dr. Goldsmith, who also serves as a neighborhood president out east over in Apple Valley, so he stay busy. Thank you.
All right.
I just want to mention too, we have, we have two young ladies that will be going to college on scholarship to play flag football.
Thank you guys for coming this morning. I especially just want to, you know, congratulations on the championship, but I just want to say, I really enjoyed your beautiful smiling faces this morning on a jury overcast day. It was a welcome sight, so thank you. Counselor Clark. Counselor Clark has a question for the mayor.
Comment and question, want to compliment you on the community education Coffee with Code Enforcement.
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering if we could get one with our staffs, just like a little Coffee with Code Enforcement for the council and staff.
Yeah, I like it, let's, we'll, I'll get with Chief and we'll get with Ms. Thomas and her team. We can set that up, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. No more questions.
See how easy that was?
Don't allow Ms. Abbott to have a question, Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott.
It's only fair. So, Mr. Mayor, you said you were going to resend the letter that was sent initially to these scofflaws. So can we also, like, add something to that letter that tells them what's going to happen to them if they don't comply?
I think part of the letter, and I'll verify this with Mr. Yates and Cedric Sparks, but I think part of the letter cites our new code ordinance and what that means. And I think, I think we can include if there's a violation or you don't comply. So why don't we do this, Cedric, if the letter has not already been sent, I know we spoke, I know they spoke about this last week, but if it hasn't been sent, let's just show, let's share with the council the draft of the letter that's actually going out to those who are owners and are landlords.
And one other thing, we still have a lot of people who are piling things all around the new unified cart, plus using other types of cans, and they're getting by with it?
Yes, so I think we did allow a grace period, and I wanted to, I want to be very transparent with you all. We understood what, what a Christmas week does versus any of the other fifty-one weeks, where I think what you saw, how the year ended.
I saw it this morning.
Oh, well, in that case, I think we're gonna do two things. You'll see us continue to educate the public. That education portion includes sharing that if it's not in the bin, if it's on top of the bin, on the side of the bin, or behind the bin, or in front of it, we can't pick it up. I think you'll also see part of that transition is each of the routes don't have just the lift yet. And so for the ones that are using the lift, well, whatever they leave out there won't be picked up. However, we have to go from, at some point, education to enforcement slash holding people accountable for them not doing their part with the updates in the code you all have voted on. And so we're gonna continually lean on the heavy education, communication piece first. As part of why I've been sharing this weekly, but in our other communication channels, we will continue to educate and open communicate if it's not in the bin, it can be picked up. I think once all of our trucks get here, I think our citizens will see this is, you don't have another option but for to purchase a second bin. So if it's not in one of the actual uniform carts, it won't be picked up. So we'll do both, we'll educate and we'll enforce, but lean heavily on the education slash communication piece first. And I think you'll see us possibly move different to full enforcement, holding people accountable once all the lifts on all the trucks.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, one of the things we were so looking forward to at this uniform garbage truck was having our neighborhoods look nice.
And I think.
And it hasn't happened yet, so, you know, we're still looking forward to it.
I think in majority pockets, I do want to, how do I say this? I think the majority of our residents are complying. I think the majority of our residents are definitely complying with the new ordinance and with the way the new system runs. I think you have some who refuse to comply, i.e. the multifamily sites. And I think you have some in our single family who may just not understand yet or are refusing to buy a second cart. So we'll continue to level up as you. So we'll continue to level up education in all of our communication channels. One of the things we are doing is, um, Civil Scarborough, uh, does a lot of engagement with our neighborhood officers. And I think one of the things we can do there is whether it's next, the Next Door app, or whether it's text, or whether it's ev-, um, not Everbridge, but, um, text communication, all of our channels, just continue to deploy information out related to our uniform bins to all of our citizens. I think we just have to keep this on repeat in communication.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Williams.
Oh. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comment about moving to enforcement. And I do agree with you, the majority of, um, citizens have had the intent to, um, to, to do the new program and, and all that kind of stuff. A cou- a couple of things. One is, in my district specifically, and I think it's because of the ways that trash pickup falls typically, it ends up being on a holiday, which means that their trash day is then moved. And then there's some confusion about recycling coupled with that. It would be great if we could have a specific policy around, you know, if, if Monday's a holiday or Friday's a holiday, wha- wha- whatever it is, that, that there is a specific day that trash pickup happens. And so what's happening is, you know, it's, it's, it changes based on the holiday.
Right.
And based on you guys' logistics, I'm sure, a- a- and what, and the other stuff y'all are juggling with that crew, equipment, staff, whatever, logistics. Um, but what it does is, is it creates mass confusion. People leave it out all week, dogs get in it, people get mad about recycling because then inevitably it, I don't know if it changes recycling or if it's, but if they're both put out, I, it, it turns into a, a, and I, and I always say BirminghamAL.gov backslash pickup. But the, if someone's looking for anything other than the exact, um, date, you know, that site is pretty sparse. Um, and so that's, that's one request is because it's, you know, it's like, you know, you know, you know, if you get like 45 calls in, in a week, that like, those are just the people that bothered to call. There's probably some confusion.
So I, I definitely think this requires dialogue and some, um, explaining. One is, um, Chad, if I'm correct, this is the first seven week window, I'm calling the seven week window, right? You have, you have the last week of, um, November, Thanksgiving, those two days where we don't work. Uh, or, or the city's closed, so city services are, get behind. And then you have Christmas week, then you have New Year's week, and then you have Martin Luther King, um, observance day. So, and there is not another window of the 52 weeks like those seven. Well, it turns out that the actual holiday, so if your trash is on the holiday, let's, let's use next Monday for example. Those who trash will be picked up on Monday, they pretty much know my trash won't be picked up because it's a federal, state, local holiday. My next makeup day is Tuesday, right? The most people I have to confuse is actually the people who trash will be picked up on Tuesday. Because if they pick their trash on Tuesday, it's not gonna be picked up because Tuesday is a makeup day for Monday. Because everybody's just one day a week. And so, uh, what I've shared with the team, let's work on the people who are for the next day. Those who would be holiday day, there's not a lot of confusion there. We're finding the confusion is for the person whose trash will be picked up the next day, which theirs is bump an additional day as well. So we're definitely gonna close that communication gap. The recycling piece, we're working through that. Again, you don't have that problem pretty much the other 40 plus weeks. But in that seven week window, it does kind of get us behind and that's why we said we make up in February. So it does lag behind in January instead of twice a month. Because that makeup day falls on the same week, those two makeup days fall on the same week recycling would be. And so because of our lower participation, um, we make the priority, um, the makeup days picking up. And look, we had this conversation during Christmas week, during New Year's week. Even to your point that there's just out there, pick it up, let's get it up, let's do everything necessary. Even if that includes overtime and, um, running routes on Saturdays and if need be Sundays. But it's no other window like that. And so this is our first year in that window. Um, I think we'll make the necessary adjustments leading up to the last quarter of next year and the beginning of next year, based on, um, everything we've experienced this year being the first time.
Okay. And then my second item is, is that we received an email about the code enforcement officers, the four code enforcement officers, which I believe the email stated the training was going to commence. Um, what, was it last week?
Should've been, yeah, should've been started last week.
Was it last, I, I'm getting confused. Anyway, the training was, the training should have commenced by now, according to the email, I'd, I'd have to pull it up. Um, is there any way that we could meet with your, I, I, I'd like to understand better how this is going to work?
If we, I'll, if it's okay with you, Council Williams, I'll get with the president on, whether the, what desire of the council, public presentation or 101s. But, um, I've spoken with Ms. King, I've spoken with Ms. Thomas, we're ready to provide you. I was gonna provide you an email update anyway on what they've already been able to accomplish in the month of January. But separate from that, what you're talking about is actual process. So yeah, we can, at the pleasure of the council, if you wanted a public meeting or 101 or public, it doesn't matter. We'll, uh, we'll give you process in this hand and we'll give you what they're actually accomplishing in this hand. That's fine.
Related to trash, I have a question, um, and really a, just a reminder. Um, so the eastern area in New Georgia landfills are free to use for residents of the city of Birmingham. And I was just trying to look up the information, um, to make sure that, so the hours of operation for the landfills are 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So, um, I don't want to see it r- here specifically, but I just want to make sure that in instances where folks may ha- have household waste that doesn't fit in the uniform trash cart, they are able to bring household waste directly to the landfill at no charge? Is that accurate?
Oh, let me get you an answer. Yes. Don't let me, I don't want to ever just say something without verify. Um, I didn't know it was other forms of trash, but it doesn't, the answer is yes, it includes household as well.
Alright, so.
That's a very, very, very unique citizen that would do that. But yes, that, that, um, opportunity does avail itself to all of our citizens weekly.
Yes, so there's, people don't have to, um, aren't, don't have to subject themselves, um, to letting household waste sit around and, you know, rot, uh, in front of their house or anywhere in proximity to their house. They have the capacity to, um, bring that directly to the landfill at no cost to them.
Yes, sir. And we, and we, in various forms on repeat, we've shared, um, um, what they can do. And so it's not just those landfill sites, you know, there is also the, there's Northwest and Eastern South as well. So there, there's ample opportunity here.
Right, so thank you for mentioning that because there's also dumpsters located at each of our Public Works precincts in each quarter of the city.
That's correct. So look, I think we're all on the same page. Um, the administration's commitment, the administration's commitment is to continue to overcommunicate this issue of the new system, um, of makeup days, um, of recycling, um, of bulk, um, as well as the two opportunities that exist if you miss or if you're overwhelmed, of what you can do as a citizen as it relates to, um, east, west, north, south, as well as the landfills.
Right, so in addition to household collect, weekly collection and every three weeks for brushing rubbish, there are a half a dozen locations distributed around the city that people can bring waste directly to.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
At this time, we'll proceed with our regular order of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item number only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for a public hearing may be, may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation marked with a P will be read and all public hearings will be announced. At this time, do any, any members of the council wish to, uh, add or remove a item to the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. This time, can we read the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda starts on page three with items four, five, and six. Page four, we have items seven and eight. On page five, we have items 10 and 11. Page six, we have items 12 and 13. Page seven, we have items 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. On page eight, we have items 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. On page nine, we have items 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28. Page 10, we have items 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33. Page 11, we have items 34, 35, 36, 37, 38. On page 12, we have items 39, 40, 41, and 42. Page 13, we have items 43, 44, 45, and 46. Page 14, we have items 47, 48, 49, 50, and 51. On page 15, we have items 52, 53. Go over to page 23, item 54. Page 29, we have item 55. And page 31, we have item 56, and that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Now, at this time, would any members of the council like to add or remove any items from the consent agenda? Do you want to point out that item 16, there appears to be an error, uh, that is page seven, item 16, appears to be a decimal place, uh, missing from the amount listed there?
It should be $6,373.20.
Thank you, and I, uh, would like to remove item eight on page four. Do any members of the public wish to speak on or move a public hearing item marked as consent? Seeing none, we are ready for the vote.
Like a motion, please.
I'm of approval of the consent agenda.
Now we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, consent agenda passes. Madam Clerk, can we read item number one, please?
Okay, the first item on the agenda is item number one on page two. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2023-00012, to change zone district boundaries from CR5 contingency multiple dwelling district to QC2 qualified general commercial district at 2205 Avenue G, filed by Danielle Baskin for the image events and situated in the southwest quarter of Section 31, Township 17 South Range 3 West Birmingham, and this is a hearing of our interested parties.
Second. Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gambrell, would you read our case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, my name's Tim Gambrell, I serve as the chief planner for the city of Birmingham. And this is KCAC 2023-12, located in the Inslee neighborhood, uh, with a proposed use of an event center and office. Uh, the applicant would like to convert an existing church into an ups-, uh, an event venue, an office space for image events and consulting. The intention is to utilize the space for multi-purposes, including office space, an event venue, and inventory storage. The subject property, 2205 Avenue G, is currently zoned CR5 contingency multi- multiple dwelling district. Properties to the north, south, east, and west are also zoned CR5. The project will encompass four lots, uh, that are approximately 15,600 square feet. Uh, the long-range land use plan identifies the property as residential low density. Uh, this land use category is intended for single-family homes, related institutional uses such as schools, place of worship, neighborhood-serving public facilities. Uh, an event center is defined as a building where the primary use is staging of temporary events and may be operated by a vendor for the purpose of renting space for private functions. An event center is permitted by special exception, uh, which the applicant must apply for and be approved from ZBA in order to move forward if the property is rezoned. An office is a permitted use NC2. Uh, the parking requirement for an event center is one space per 100 square foot of gross floor area. The event center is 27, or 2,728 square feet, uh, which would require 27 parking spaces. The site plan shows seven parking spaces on site and a grassy area that would accommodate additional parking. Uh, the applicant will need to apply for a parking modification through the zoning board of adjustment, um, to adjust their parking requirement, or to modify their parking requirement. Uh, the applicant plans to use the structures that are currently on site and no construction is proposed at this time. A subdivi- subdivision action will be required to combine the four lots into one. Uh, the proposal was reviewed by a city landscape architect. Uh, and the com- they made a few comments that a full landscaping plan would be required. Um, and it would be helpful to have the parking spaces delineated in the overflow area to determine requirements for that site. Uh, stormwater, I mentioned that all permits and ordinances shall apply for any new construction. Um, the Birmingham Department of Transportation, I mentioned that all driveways and curb cuts will need to be reviewed by BDOT to ensure adequate ingress and egress. Uh, the Inslee Neighborhood Association met at its regular scheduled meeting on September 21, 2023, uh, to review the proposed project and voted to support the proposed zoning request 13 in support and zero, uh, to not support. The zoning advisory committee met a regular scheduled meeting on October 17, 2023, and likewise voted to recommend the zoning request with the following Q conditions. Uh, they asked for a limitation on hours of operation and to limit the uses, uh, just to multifamily residential office, place of worship, and event center. Uh, the planning and zoning committee met on November 8, 2023 to review the proposed project and voted not to recommend the rezoning request. and voted not to recommend the rezoning request. If approved, the following Q commissions, Q conditions are recommended, and those are ones that limit the hours. Um, and then also it limits the uses, uh, to, um, very few uses, farmer's market, public market, office, uh, duplex, triplex, quadplex, communal living facility, uh, garage sale, yard sale, park, greenway, event center, mobile grocery store, and then solar panels. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. If the applicant is here, would you please, uh, come and talk to us about your plans? This is a public hearing, and any people who are here to speak to this item will certainly be entertained.
Good morning to, uh, our mayor, uh, president, President Protim, and the Birmingham City Council members. My name is Danielle Baskin, I am the, uh, CEO of the Image Events and Consulting located here in Birmingham, Alabama. I am also, uh, born and raised right here in Birmingham, Alabama, product of the Birmingham City School System, uh, H. Parker High School. Uh, I would like to first paint a, uh, quick picture of our company and our services, if you'll give me just a moment to do that. The Image Events and Consulting is a full-service event logistics company, providing excellent services in the areas of design, event production, as well as event management, with the focus on mainly corporate events. Uh, as a serial entrepreneur, uh, and event creative, I have been serving the greater Birmingham area and surrounding cities and states in the field of events for the past fifteen years. My company is one hundred percent women-owned, uh, as well as a hundred percent minority-owned. Uh, in the past three years, we have employed over six college students, uh, with paid summer and winter internships in which they have learned the art and the business of event planning, uh, as well as, uh, the Image Events and Consulting has served clients, uh, to the likes of Alabama Power, the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, uh, the SCLC, the Alabama Collective, the Jefferson County Department of Health, as well as the Coca-Cola Foundation, just to name a few. In two thousand twenty-three, the Image Events and Consulting constructed a water well in which we planted a, uh, well, a mechanized borehole in Ghana to serve the communities with fresh water. In June of two thousand twenty-three, we acquired a property in the Inslee community at twenty-two zero five Avenue G, formerly the Worship and Deliverance Ministry, with the intentions to establish the Image Events and Consulting as a staple in the Inslee community. Prior to the purchase of the property, we rented office space inside of Innovation Depot while simultaneously renting warehouse space for our inventory. Frustrated by the increase of rental cost, we moved the Image Events and Consulting to my personal home, and of course that lit an immediate fire to find a permanent home for the Image Events and Consulting. Today, I am requesting your support in the rezoning of the property at twenty-two zero five Avenue G in Inslee, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one eight, from CR five to C two. This proposed rezoning is integral to our vision for contributing positively to the downtown Inslee community through the establishment of office space for the Image Events and Consulting staff, showroom space, and inventory housing, and, um, the potential use of an upscale event venue. The primary use of this property will be dedicated to office space for our current employees, facilitating efficient operations and enhancing our engagement with our clients. This space will also serve as a strategic inventory storage showroom studio, showcasing our event-related inventory to potential clients, providing them with a tangible vision of the exceptional experience that we curate. The transformation of a portion of this property into an event venue aligns with our goals of growth strategy, offering a diversified resident, revenue stream to sustain and expand our business. While the event venue will be a valuable addition to downtown Inslee, it is essential to clarify that this will not be the primary use of the property. Our focus remains on office operations, logistical excellence, and fostering positive community impact. A portion of the space is currently staged with eight sections of event inventory that can be rearranged to suit an event party of no more than fifty guests. These items can be moved and rearranged, uh, in proportion for however a client will see fit. The other portion has been partitioned to accommodate the inventory needs. We also have two smaller spaces on the property that can be used for small private events and meetings, seminars, coworking spaces, potential podcast studio, and content creation. We are prepared to adhere to all applicable regulations, ensuring seamless compliance with the city's guidelines. The rezoning to C two is not only crucial for the image event's success and growth, but it also aligns with the city's border goals for revitalizing the area and fostering vibrant, community-enhancing spaces. Our business hours will not exceed twelve AM on Fridays and Saturdays, ten PM Monday through Thursday, and eight PM on Sunday. The property does cover four lots, half of the block. In addition to the eight current paved parking spaces, we have two grassy lots which we are prepared to gravel for additional parking usage. One lot is eighteen hundred square feet, which allocates an additional nine parking spaces, and another grassy lot is one thousand, one hundred and sixteen square feet, which allocates another five spaces. Your support in rezoning, in this rezoning effort, is pivotal for the success of our venture and its positive impact on the local economy and community. We earnestly look forward to working collaboratively with the city of Birmingham and the city council to turn this vision into a reality, contributing to the ongoing growth and prosperity of downtown Inslee. I appreciate each of you all for your time and your consideration and your anticipated support, and I invite you all to come out to see the space so you can lay your eyes on it and see what the manifestation of God's glory looks like. Amen?
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, is there anyone in the audience who is here to speak to this zoning issue? Seeing none, um, I would ask council members if they have any questions. I know I have a couple of questions, but I want to hear from my colleagues first. Madam President Protim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Baskin, for that information. I did miss, um, your hours of operation. I know there's some Q conditions that have been considered. What did you say your hours of operation would be?
So on, uh, Monday through Thursday, uh, they will not exceed eight PM, I'm sorry, ten PM. Uh, Sundays, we will not go past eight PM. And on Fridays and Saturdays, midnight. That means wrapped and out of the building prior to midnight.
And my second question, you are considering the additional parking through the use of the grassy area. You own that property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's part of your four lots?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Pres, Mr. President?
Yes, uh, I think you stated this, but I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. So your primary intended use of the property is, as office space for your business and for storage of, uh, equipment that you use for events at other locations, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So the, the event center function would be a secondary purpose?
Absolutely, it is not the primary use of the space. Uh, we still need to be able to operate a functioning business. We do have clients that, uh, utilize other event venues within the city of Birmingham and surrounding cities, and so we do have a full-service staff and trucks to be able to go out and facilitate those events with our inventory as well as other vendors that we utilize.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, anyone else? Yes, Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Baskin, talk to us a little bit about when you do lease a space out for people to have events. Talk to us a little bit about your public safety plan and how do you plan to address, um, the public safety needs of the community?
So we do intend to vet, uh, every client that would like to utilize our space. Uh, as I mentioned, we do solely, uh, not solely, but mainly focus on corporate clients. We do, uh, some smaller events in reference to birthday parties and anniversaries for family of our clients that we've done in the past. Uh, but we do plan to sought out, we've already worked, uh, directly with, uh, Nolan Security, and they will handle our security for each one of our events. We also plan to have, uh, an off-duty, off-duty police officer that has to be present during each event, which we have put it into our, uh, event packages that, uh, this is, there has to be a payment for those security as well as police that would have to be on-site during every event. Also, in addition to that, we are a full-service event planning company, so what we are not is a lockbox type of, uh, event center, if you will, that you can go and grab the key, open up, clean up, put the trash out. We don't operate that way, uh, we want to make sure we are fully on-site during each event. I do currently have three employees and, uh, a multiplicity of contractors that we hired to come and help with additional, uh, events.
Is that all? Okay, uh, Counselor Moore?
Yes, uh, so I just wanted to, uh, find out about these four lots that you do have, or, uh, the grassy lots that you have. I'm looking at the space, uh, now, and I see that there's a corner lot on the corner of, uh, Avenue G and I want to say Twenty-Second Street, Inslee. Is that the, uh, lot that?
That is one of the grassy areas, that's correct. Uh, there is a house that also sits, uh, on that lot, and then you may see a storage unit, uh, behind, there's a grassy lot back there, that storage unit is no longer there.
Got you, and I think the space that I'm referring to is diagonal to where you all's building is. Is, is that the grassy lot that?
No, where all the grassy spaces that I'm referring to are actually within that gated fence that you may see, if you're looking at it from an aerial view. So there's, uh, two grassy lots that are empty and mapped out for additional parking.
Got you, and would you be aware of who actually owns that empty space?
Uh, I am, I, um, Lamar Story, I believe, owns one of the properties right across, um, the street from where I am, and so he and I have had some talks about utilizing parking. We have not finalized anything at this moment, uh, but he does own that, and I think adjacent, uh, is part of the land bank.
Got it, okay, all right. Yeah, because I was looking at that space, and I'm like, man, that's large enough to be able to accommodate those parking spaces that you need to be able to, uh, reach that twenty-seven, and so, um, okay, thank you.
Thank you, any, yes, uh, Counselor Smithman?
Hi, yes, thank you, um, Madam Chairwoman. How many people will the event center hold?
So currently, we're, we're only looking at hosting, uh, forty to fifty people for small events. Uh, so again, we have smaller spaces in the back that we could do smaller intimate meetings, uh, conferences, things of that nature, but no more than fifty people is what we're looking to host at a time.
Okay, and did you apply, make sure I'm listening correctly, did you apply for a parking modification through the zoning adjustment? Was there a condition?
I have not done so.
Okay, is that a condition for her? Okay, gotcha, and do you think you'll be able to fulfill it based off of the two grassy lots, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Thank you, Madam, uh, Committee Chair. Um, I guess this is for Tim and Ms. Baskin. Um, on, on your site, you mentioned a half-block, but, but as I look at it, it looks like less than a quarter-block. Are you counting, if you look at the whole block, both sides of the alley, you're, you're probably a portion of a half-block, correct? It's just the twenty-two oh five property, not the twenty-two eleven property?
Seven eleven, uh, Twenty-Second Street, Inslee, as well as twenty-two zero five Avenue G.
So twenty-two eleven is part of it as well?
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven, so the, it's a little confusing. The church address is actually seven eleven, Twenty-Second Street, Inslee. The house that sits on the property as well is twenty-two zero five Avenue G.
So it's an entire half-block? It's bounded by Avenue G, Twenty-Second Street, Twenty-third Street, and the alley?
It does not go over into Twenty-third Street.
Okay. Okay, and how many structures are on the property?
Two.
The church building?
And there's a residential house, home.
Okay, so that residential house is a part of the property you're looking to rezon, so that's not somebody living there. How many, okay, so you're required to have twenty-seven or twenty-nine spaces based on your s- Twenty-seven? And you can accommodate how many on your property?
Uh, it looks like once we, I, I actually-
The total number?
Right, the, the, based on what, um, Mr. Tim read earlier, it's one, uh, I think one hundred square foot per parking space. My, uh, contractor that came out to look was calculating it as two hundred square feet per parking space. So if it's only one hundred square feet per parking space, uh, it looks like we're able to accommodate all of the twenty-seven.
Okay, so you can modify your property to create parking surfaces for all of the required parking on your property?
That is correct.
Okay, that, that makes a huge difference for me because, um, I, I just know me, and I'm gonna, I don't care where I'm supposed to park, I'm gonna park what's convenient for me. Um, so the area around you is largely residential, even though it's, a lot of it's vacant at this point. If she was to use, say, this Lamar Story lot, it would also have to be zoned to convert from a residential lot to a lot that's used for additional parking, or, or what? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, the property would, um, you know, have to be under her control. Uh, generally speaking, it would need to be one lot. Um, so the use needs to be on the same lot as the parking. Um, and it would need to be zoned appropriately.
Okay, so she would have to control that through a lease or a parking license or something, and also have it zoned?
In order to rezone it, I think she would need to own it.
Own it, okay, or the owner would need to rezone it?
That is true, but in that case, I think she would need a parking agreement if somebody else owns the property.
A parking agreement, yes. I was just wondering if there were some opportunities for expansion into some of the vacant land? What would that require to be used as parking? Um, but it sounds like she can, she, do you agree that she has space for all the parking?
I do not know that. I think that we would need to see demonstration of that. Um, we've been told that just now, um, but I don't think we have demonstration of that fact.
Do you have any concerns about there being room on her property?
Uh, I think we would like to see, we'd like to see a site plan that shows that. Because that would affect, you know, the, the way the case has been evaluated and how the report's been created. And so to provide, to our knowledge, we're providing the information that's accurate and available when the report was written. If there's something different, you know, we would need to see that site plan and verify that it could actually be accommodated.
Okay.
Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, did, ma'am, I'm sorry, will you remind me of your name one more time?
Danielle Baskin.
All right, Ms. Baskin. First of all, thank you for, um, being so prepared. I've seen a lot of different hearings over the past seven years, and some people, um, barely know how to spell their name, and some people come here like you and, uh, know exactly every single aspect of, um, their potential project and their business. So thank you for your preparedness, and, um, uh, I think, I, I really appreciate that because it makes it a lot more coherent and clear about what's hap, going on. Will you remind me, do you, uh, on the current church as well as that residential structure, are they currently vacant right now?
The church?
Uh-huh, and, and the, and the resid, the two structures on the property you're talking about, are they currently vacant?
I own both of them, so we, my office space is the house, and then my inventory currently sits in the church space.
Okay, um, thank you. And, uh, thank you also for, uh, it, it's very clear that, um, that, uh, that investments like these, um, I, I know we all have different opinions on what we would consider spot zoning. However, investments like these, I think, can go a long way in, um, in making a neighborhood that might be a little bit more distressed, bring up, you know, rising tide raises all ships sometimes, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, any other council members? Okay, my, oh, Mr. Moore?
So, quick question for you, Mr. Gambrell. Um, in the event of the whole, uh, I guess, lease agreement or parking agreement with Mr. Story, uh, would that be something that would have to take place before or after, uh, this action today?
Well, yeah, I think, you know, like the report says, that, you know, to understanding they're deficient in parking at this point in time. So if we do rezone the property, we rezone the property with that understanding. In order for them to operate, they would have to go through a process with zoning board of adjustment, either for a modification or for a parking agreement approval. Uh, and, and likewise, I think that if they intend to gravel their- Uh, and, and likewise, I think that if they intend to gravel their parking, then that would probably require a variance as well. Um, so that would be like a substitute surface, um, and, and they would need a variance for that also. But I think typically, you know, like I say, you know, the zoning needs to be in place in order for them to move forward. And then if they have deficiencies in their case, then they're gonna have to deal with zoning board of adjustment. And I think what we're doing here is presenting the facts as we know them at the time that they were submitted, that they're deficient in parking. If this case is approved, they will have to go through zoning board of adjustment. And so if you do approve it, you approve it without understanding that they are deficient in parking as their plan was submitted.
But would that stop us from being able to, I guess, come back to the table? Uh...
I, I do wanna make-
Yeah, I mean, we, we can, but... Yeah, we haven't seen a site plan. Did you bring a site plan with you?
Uh, I provided a site plan. I do have, you know, I have a few copies here. And I also want to add that according to the parking spaces that are needed, it is based on the square footage of the entire building being twenty-seven hundred square feet. The event venue space is not twenty-seven hundred square feet. It's actually half of that. Uh, because again, like I stated, it is right now partitioned. Uh, it is only with a maximum capacity of fifty guests that can be able to be housed in the space to do an event. So it is partitioned with our event inventory. We do have, um, over, I would guess, if I had to guess, we have about a hundred to two hundred pieces of event inventory, including furniture, chairs, uh, tables, pipes and drap- tent. So it is housed inside of the space. So it is partitioned off. So that space is not utilized for an event space. So my thought process is the twenty-seven parking spaces is only based on the size of the building, which in part, that is not the entire space that we'd be utilizing for events. At best, if we're operating our normal business, there'd be two to three, uh, cars in the parking lot at a time. Uh, so it, with that, that means, again, myself, staff, a truck at best to be able to move and do our events as we do.
Yes, Councilor Clark?
I, I guess one of the things concerning me, uh, and I guess this is for Mr. Gambrell, is that with what she's saying versus, you know, what's before us, it sounds like she might not need the parking variance. If we could sort of clean up her case and have it, or verify that she can comply, you know, with the parking requirements within her property. Is that, how would we go about that? And what would be the best course to get what's before us and what we'll vote on to be more consistent with what she's presenting so that, um, you know, so that if, if it's gonna prevent her having to go make some other stops to get some other, um, variances or special exceptions, I don't know.
Yeah, she'll have to be especially guardless, yeah. The parking would be a modification. The variance would be for the surface of the parking lot. Um, I think that, you know, our policy in situations like this is always to, you know, be conservative and use the gross floor area for the entire structure. You know, I'm not disputing, uh, what Ms. Baskin is saying, but it's possible that they could use that space in the future. And I think that's kind of our, has been our policy, uh, especially with event centers and bars and heavy traffic generators, uh, is to, you know, calculate it, the entire building at that, at that, um, rate.
Councilor Woods?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, had the opportunity to hear this case in committee. Uh, been a while, but, uh, I appreciate your attention to detail. Thank you really. Did a good job of answering all the issues that were brought up at that time. Uh, have an appreciation for really willingness to, to invest back into that community. I think a lot of times, and, and we can see it across city, uh, churches, schools, uh, when they're no longer utilized for that purpose tend to, uh, sit its holes in the community. And so just a willingness to, to reinvest in the city and build. Um, I think it's needed. I think we have to continually find, uh, what uses can work in neighborhood spaces, but also, you know, remove the blind. You know, I think that's one of the things where I think you're able to kind of strike a balance with this project. But, uh, like I said, more than anything, I think every question that we had at committee meeting, you've been kind of able to, to bring a lot more clarity to it. Um, I get what you're saying about the kind of square footage things, but, um, yeah, I mean, I think there's enough there. I think you've got some work to do, maybe getting, um, some additional parking just to go over and beyond, uh, what you may need, just to kind of put people's minds at ease. But, uh, no, I just have appreciation for people. Uh, when you make money and then you have the option of where you want to invest those dollars, uh, have appreciation for people that were willing to go back in and, uh, kind of fill some gaps. So, uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Gambrell, um, it's my understanding that the Planning and Zoning Division of, uh, PEP, uh, is currently working on and, and is proposing the council consider amendment of its, um, zoning ordinance with respect to parking requirements. Knowing that that is forthcoming for this body to deliberate on, can you help me understand what this case would look like with regard to the parking considerations? If those zoning changes were in fact approved by the council?
Sure. Um, so, yeah, the, the proposal would eliminate parking minimums. Uh, and, and we currently have parking maximums, but there would be a focus placed on maximums and the minimum would be eliminated.
So is it accurate to interpret that, to say that should that amendment to the zoning ordinance be adopted, that Ms. Baskin's facility would have sufficient parking available? Um, or it would be within the allowances of the proposed zoning amendments?
I believe that's accurate. Yeah.
Thank you.
However, the parking will not be retroactive. And so if this case is approved, then she has to provide the parking. That's what we were told by your staff, Mr. Gambrell. It's not retroactive. It doesn't go backwards and take in all the people who provided parking for their clients. And that's what we've been told.
Yeah, I would, I would want to consult with the city, Officer City Attorney and, and, and staff and just verify that, the position.
That's a good idea. Anyone el- uh, yes, Councilor Sm- Smitherman?
Was it stated why the committee, um, voted not to recommend?
Well, due to the encroachment into the residential neighborhood and the usual things that we end up with noise and parking issues. Because as our colleague has told us, some people just park wherever it seems convenient, whether it's in front of someone else's house or not. So, uh, that was the real reason, was encroachment into the residential area. And if you look at the map that we were provided, which is very confusing because it shows one lot being the site. And we keep on being told that there are four lots here, but they don't show on the city's zoning map. At least not the one that was provided to us. And the, you know, of course, the address of the one with the big red arrow pointing towards it, you can't read the address, but I assume from everything else that's been pr- provided that that's the property. But it shows one lot. So where are the four lots?
Yeah, I would imagine that the map you're looking at does not have the lot layer turned on, is what I'm guessing. Um...
Well, yeah, there are lots all over the place.
Well... Yeah, there, but, and these are, I mean, there may be lot lines within here that you cannot see.
Why would that occur?
Because the layer is not turned on.
Well, there are lots shown. And this shows being about less than a quarter of the block.
Yeah, what you're seeing there are parcels, I believe, and there may be lots, lot lines within there.
The deed to the prop- the deed to the property shows that there are four lots within that space that I purchased.
Okay, and it looks like it's less than a quarter of the block. And someone said that it was a half a block, half of the block.
Based on starting at twenty-two, uh, Twenty Second Street and Avenue G, it goes to, so pretty much where the, uh, alley is, Avenue G Alley, uh, all the way to Avenue G. That is the four lots, from alley to street. So I'm not sure which sketch. I, I passed some, I do have some additional sketches here.
We have what was provided to us by Mr. Gambrell's office. And so we have a map from the city's zoning. And then we have a hand sketch, which I assume you did, that's not to scale, that shows some parking in between the, I, I suppose that's the church proper, the church building and the house. But it's not to scale, and so it shows, it shows, it shows the parking space is about the same size as a square on the sidewalk. So it's confusing. So it would be good to have something to scale.
I was just gonna mention that, you know, I did look up the site on our GIS system. And so that lot that's labeled twenty-two oh five parcel actually contains four lots. So when you turn on the lot layer within GIS, you can see the yellow lines that are the lot lines. So the parcel twenty-two oh five that's on your map is made up of four separate lots.
Okay, well, maybe in the future, we could have the layers turned on so we could see them. What is that twenty-two eleven, which is your adjacent neighbor?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was the question?
What is located at twenty-two eleven? It's like your adjacent neighbor on the map. It looks like the corner of Twenty Third and Avenue G.
Yeah, the only, the only, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but what surrounds me, there are two apartment complexes. There's one directly in front of me and there's one, uh, to the left of me. And then there are two residential homes, uh, single-family homes immediately behind that apartment complex. Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct. It is another church. That is correct. Right behind me is, there's another church.
Okay, so do they have parking? Is there any chance that?
There is parking. Uh, I have reached out a number of times. I do not think that church is in full operation. Uh, I haven't seen any activity on Sundays and the number in the phone book is not, uh, working either.
Okay, okay. Well, you know, from the committee's standpoint, it was just the concern that we've gone, if you're looking at the map, the orange color is commercial and the yellow is residential. And we just viewed that it was moving, encroaching into the residential neighborhood, which many of us who have had these event centers next to our neighborhoods have had issues that require police attention and all kinds of other attention that we rarely get. So, uh, that was the reasoning behind it.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilor Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, wanted to clarify, um, or add some additional information to the response associated with, uh, Councilor Smitherman's question around the vote at the November eighth committee meeting. And so just for clarity, I think there were some reasoning given that that was a no recommendation. What actually happened is that appears to have been entered wrong into the record. This was a, um, and bear with me, this was a action that sent the item to full counsel with, without a recommendation, but with no recommendation. And so it's not a recommendation of no. Uh, at the time, I believe myself and Chairwoman, uh, Abbott were the only two present. And typically, our custom had been when we didn't, uh, both agree on it, we just sent it to full counsel without a recommendation. And so, uh...
Okay, well, we'll check the minutes because I don't, I don't recall it, but we go to a lot of meetings. So we'll check the minutes and see what they say.
Yeah, I remember. It was my, it was my last, um, planning zoning committee meeting, so it was a special day for me. So I, uh, really locked it in, but we, um...
We should have had refreshments, I'm sorry.
Y'all treated, y'all set me off well. I appreciate it. Um, but it was just, uh, it was just us two that day and we sent it with no recommendation. And so, um, yeah, I just want to make that clear. So all these, all the reasons that were presented, that was not the actual action, uh, that was taken. And so I apologize, I, I, that, you know, I wasn't sure what exact date we changed over, November eighth. I was still on that committee and we did, uh, send it to full counsel with no recommendation. Um, and I mean, I think there were a handful of, like, issues brought up, but it was not, I thought overall, you know, you had, you know, covered a lot of the items. And so, uh, I know how much of a stickler you are for the specifics and, and-
Yeah, we'll check it. We'll check it. Because mistakes can be made, especially if you're saying, uh, we made no recommendation instead of a no recommendations.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm far off from perfect. So I just wanted to share that information and we can, um, kind of do what we need to do to clean it up. But I just, uh, wanted to make sure I added that on the record. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Councilor Moore has another question?
Um, I, well, let's question more statement. I think, you know, looking at Avenue G, you know, um, and your property being on the same side as the church, uh, it provides for a lot of public parking or street parking, uh, that does not impact, uh, a residential space, right? There is no house along that side, and so nobody would be interfered with. Um, you've already stated that you have plans to, you know, provide some additional parking in the future. Uh, and that street parking would just allow for even more, uh, parking to your space. And so, uh, for me, I, I look at it and, you know, I see a way forward. Uh, and so, um, I just, I just wanted to, you know, kind of make that statement. Uh, and to, again, thank you for, you know, being extremely patient and answering all these questions that, you know, that we have. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, anyone else?
Chair, I just want to ask, did we call for, if there were any, um, anyone speaking to, for or against? Has that already been called?
We, we did and no one, no one came forth, so... So I believe that we're ready for a vote, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk? Uh, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Smitherman? Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Council President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
All right, that request is approved. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
The next item is also on page two. It's item number two. A resolution assenting to the vacation of one hundred thousand six hundred seventy square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Fifteenth Avenue North and Seventeenth Avenue North and perpendicular to and between Twenty Second Avenue North and Twenty Fifth Avenue North on behalf of the Birmingham Jefferson Civic Center Authority owners, so that the owner can consolidate the property. And this is a hearing of all interested parties. It's case number S U B two thousand twenty-three dash zero 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 sixty-five.
Second. Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, Mr. Gambrell, if you will please read our case.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Tim Gambrell, I serve as Chief Planner for the City of Birmingham. Uh, this is case S U B two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-five. Um, it is a resolution to determine whether the city council will give its assent to the vacation of one hundred thousand six hundred and seventy square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Fifteenth Avenue North and Seventeenth Avenue North and perpendicular- and perpendicular to and between Twenty-Second Street North and Twenty-Fifth Street North, so that the owner can consolidate property, and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such right as they may have to egress and ingress from their property. Uh, the one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at eighty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. On October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council. And on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Community Development Committee forward this vacation to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
My, my apologies for the mistake.
We switched over here.
Yeah, this is actually a case that was heard by the Community Development Committee, so, Madam, our Mr. Chair person.
Thank you, I appreciate. Uh, is there anyone in the public that would, uh, like to speak to, uh, for or against this item? Yeah.
Good morning, everyone, members of the council, mayor, uh, my name's Taz Snyder, I'm Executive Director for the Birmingham Jefferson Civic Center Authority. Uh, this vacation request, uh, before you is an ena- an enabling step towards the amphitheater project. And if you have any questions about, uh, the particular aspects of the vacation, I'd be happy to answer any of them you have.
I, I guess if you could, Mr. Snyder, uh, could you share with us, I guess, uh, what this, this land would be used for?
Yeah, so all the surrounding property around these, these areas that are supposed to be vacated are for the amphitheaters, part of the star uptown project.
Uh, councilors, are there any questions that you all have? Yes, Mr. Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Snyder, are we on time?
Yes.
Great, that's all.
And, and yes, you can come up and.
I'm just Mark Clark, with Show Engineering, I'm here with Mr. Snyder, we, we're the, uh, engineer of record, I was just here to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. Uh, anybody else, any other councilors? Well, Mr. President, I'll pass it back over to you.
All right, Madam Ch- uh, Clerk.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
Please note my abstention, thank you.
Thank you, that item passes, um, request is granted. Madam Clerk, next item.
Okay, the next item is item number three. On page two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement pursuant to Act number nineteen sixty-nine dash nine one six between the City of Birmingham and the Birmingham Parking Authority for the exchange of vehicles of approximately equal value. The city owns a twenty-twenty-two Chevrolet Malibu sedan valued at approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars, dollars, which is no longer needed for municipal purposes, and will trade it to the authority for a twenty-fifteen Ford Transit three fifty van valued at approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars. This is an item of permanent operation, so we will need unanimous consent first to take up the item.
Motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay, uh.
Move the item.
Well, we got to do the vote, uh, Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Protem Alexander. And Council President O'Quinn.
Aye.
All right, now we'll take the motion. Now it's before you.
Counselor Williams.
Why, why are we doing this? Good morning, Chaz.
Mr. President, uh, Council Hunter Williams told the Birmingham Parking Authority has a van that, uh, the city can use, it has low mileage, it has probably around thirteen thou- thirteen hundred miles on it. And we want to do a swap for swap for sedan that we have in our inventory that they can use more efficient than we, what we can use for, what their needs are, so the van will be entering our inventory that we need, and so we'll exchange the van for a sedan for them to use in their inventory.
I'll ask you later, thanks. It, it is a complete miracle we were able to find an exact dollar value trade, I'm very impressed with our ability.
Chief Mitchell, did you, did you just say that the, the van has thirteen hundred miles on it? Wow, they really did need it, yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, note that it's a twenty-fifteen, um, so, okay.
Mr. President, can I ask a good question? Yeah, I was, I was curious about this one too, like, were you snooping around in their vans to see how many miles they had on them or what? Um, and the parking authority is supposed to be parking, not driving vans around, so.
Well, it was.
This was very strange.
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. President, the actual request came from the director of the Birmingham Parking Authority, because he was doing the inventory of his, what, his fleet, and so, as noted, he had a van that had very, very low mileage. So he reached out to myself and, um, Sergio Roberts of Equipment Management to see if we can do a swap for swap to improve efficiencies.
Well, it, it is interesting, it, it made me smile, I thought, well, answer man is going to get to answer some questions on this one. Because you are the answer man, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, um, and since BPA, you know, manages our parking facilities, and it's highly likely that both vehicles are parked in a facility that they manage, um, maybe even right next to each other. Um, yeah, anyway, I think we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item passes, next item.
Okay, the next item will be on page four. It is item number eight. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the City of Birmingham and Tech Birmingham in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars, under which Tech Birmingham will implement its Birmingham Upskill Partnership Initiative to pilot and eventually launch a comprehensive program designed to effectively transition junior developers and engineers into senior-level talent where significant resource and programmatic gaps remain to help companies retain their workforce to address the shortage of experienced senior-level talent, which has hindered the growth and development of an innovative technology ecosystem to address the negative economic impacts of the COVID-nineteen pandemic experienced by tech workers in the City of Birmingham due to the workers' occupation or level of training, or training.
Move the item. Um, so at this time, um, we'll welcome the distinguished and illustrious Dion Gordon to tell us a little bit about this project.
I really just came here to request a van, but, uh. Since how that's now going, we'll talk about this, uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, so I'm Dion Gordon, and I serve as the President and CEO of Tech Birmingham, it's our Regions Technology Association. Goal is simple, make sure that we're positioning and champion Birmingham as an economic innovation hub, uh, that we are providing growth opportunities for our citizens, uh, whether they are young or the young at heart. Uh, some of you all are familiar with the initiative that we helped to launch called Ed Farm in partnership with Apple. Uh, it's one of the crown jewels that we've been involved with. Um, and then, of course, to provide community and connectivity, so people can develop the connections, the relationships, the resources that they need to have viable careers and pathways into technology. Um, I first just want to say thanks again to Counselor O'Quinn for the partnership, um, and the thought leadership. Um, and of course, to you all on the council for this opportunity. Uh, the last time I saw most of you all, we were talking about SLOST tech. Uh, and so I just have to say thank you all for the support and for the runway uh, in re-establishing that technology conference, truly one of the premier conferences in the southeast. Um, as you all know, we had to suspend it because of the pandemic. It's incredibly hard to resurrect something, um, after four years of being a hiatus. Um, I lift all of that up because this support, hopefully, um, is not just in particular for this project, but also for the entire ecosystem. Um, I like to talk in stories, so if you all indulge me, one of the names that we lifted up when we were talking about SLOST tech, um, was Destiny Patton, and she was a, um, junior at the time at Ramsey High School. Um, and she caught wind of SLOST tech and reached out to Adrian Starks, who runs a program called Stream Innovations. Uh, Destiny attended with a number of other kids and high school students. Uh, and she said that the experience touched her so much, she decided to shift her career trajectory. Um, I can't recall apologies what she was doing, but it was in a non-technical role, what her goal was, but uh, she quickly decided that she needed to pivot toward a STEM career. Uh, she is now a promising student at the Rochester Institute of Technology. Um, number of other stories like that. Now, bringing that as to why, um, I'm in front of you all today, because of, uh, the councilors and you all's leadership, the Council President's leadership, uh, is because of the future of work. And so the charge that, um, Council President O'Quinn really, uh, put in front of us, and I say us, this is a, a collaborative effort between Tech Birmingham, Innovation Depot, uh, Birmingham Bound. Um, I serve on both of those boards, the, some of the leaders of those organizations serve on my board, so it's truly a collaborative effort. Uh, but the charge was, what are the issues that are really preventing Birmingham from, uh, hitting that next level? Um, as it, as it relates to being a technology and an innovation hub. Uh, we made tremendous strides, but obviously we can't rest, uh, on our laurels, um, under the leadership. Of course, under Mayor Woodfin and his team, and you all on this day, as we were, um, awarded the federal tech hub designation. So all of this is timely, uh, but the same questions that we're asking, other cities are asking as well, especially as it relates to the future of work, AI, the impact that that is going to have. Uh, so the number that I leave you all with is fifty percent, uh, because that is the number that people are predicting in terms of the jobs that will either be eliminated or look radically different. So imagine Destiny Patton sitting in a college classroom right now, training and preparing for a job that might not exist when she graduates. And so this upscaling initiative is one way that we could start to think about what it takes to build out the ecosystem that is more future-proof, that is more attractive to the Destiny Patents of the world. Uh, as it relates, uh, to, um, upskilling, it's much better to invest in the existing workforce than it is to try to go out and, and recruit. Uh, and if you talk to anybody in tech, in the local ecosystem, they'll tell you that is a major gap that we have yet to identify, and again, Birmingham is not unique in that, but it also gives us an opportunity to serve as thought leaders, as other cities are looking to figure out how do they stay relevant. And so the gap, if you'll recall, Innovate Birmingham, um, we got that grant, we, the collective, uh, the city, um, six million dollars, America's, um, promise out of the Department of Labor, designed to, uh, connect nine hundred and twenty-five opportunity youth to high-tech and demand jobs, and demand tech jobs. Um, that program, of course, is no longer, was absorbed by Central Six, who are also partners in this work. Uh, but I lift that up because we gave a lot of people who were in non-technical roles entryways and pathways into tech jobs. Um, but we have not had a similar focus on taking that entry-level, early-career talent and translating that into senior tech talent. That is the major gap, so in a lot of ways, this is a continuation of the work that has already been done and already started under Innovate Birmingham. Um, and it's hard for us as an ecosystem to attract senior-level talent, because if you, for instance, are in Silicon Valley and you reach out and say, there's a job here in Birmingham, one of your first questions before you decide to uproot your entire family in existence is, what is the landscape like? What are other jobs, comparable jobs available, because if, if it doesn't work out for this particular company, I want to know that I can at least go to some other companies that I have options, I don't want to uproot and relocate just for a small, one-off opportunity. And so that is a deficiency that, again, uh, uh, all cities are having to ask themselves, but what all cities are not doing is finding out ways to invest in their existing talent. And we've already done a remarkable job of making sure that kids, um, young adults have access to entry-level talent, and so now this is an opportunity to upscale, and in a lot of ways, rescale, especially with the advent of AI, uh, to upscale them so that they can then help not just start these companies, but to help these companies scale, thrive, have successful exits, or move from startup to mature. Uh, so that's the overall gist, we've been in conversation for about a year, um, actually, uh, with this project. Uh, we've already had a number of conversations with, uh, consultants and, uh, team members across uh, the nation who have done similar work in cities such as Austin and Tulsa, so we have some beginnings of a blueprint that we can look at, and then I mentioned Innovate Birmingham as well. The council that was a part of that, uh, effort, it was referred to as the IT cluster. Innovate Birmingham doesn't exist, but that IT cluster, that collection of individuals, job seekers, hiring partners, uh, and training providers and education, uh, centers, uh, that still exists, and we still run that in partnership with Central Six. All that to say, as we are piloting this work, we have a built-in apparatus, uh, to validate those assumptions. This is what the evidence, uh, shows us, this is what we are presenting. Uh, what does it take for us to institute that into your respective organizations or job seeker? How does this help in your goal to, uh, have a viable career where you can move forward and up, um, in your workplace? So we have the components, um, we have the relationships, and, uh, as I mentioned earlier, this is just an opportunity for us to, um, step out in front, uh, and, and hopefully create a model that other cities look to Birmingham, uh, to reference, so. Happy to entertain, uh, any questions, any input, I hope that this is not the last time that I see you all, because, again, um, this is going to have to be a, a, an initiative that reaches, uh, citywide, as we consider, um, not just those who are already in tech, but those who are not in tech, but wish to have a career, uh, in IT or STEM-related field, so, thank you all again.
Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, this is great. What will the actual work product be? Will there be, will these be training classes, certification classes? Just networking with a bunch of people who are in the biz, I mean, what will you actually do?
No, that's a, a great question, thank you, so the components of this, uh, will be a training program. Um, and mentioning, going back to the validation portion of this, we have an idea that this is something that can live off-site, for instance, Innovation Depot, we've had conversations about that. So it's similar in makeup to Innovation Depot, where, for instance, a ship or a landing, Harmony Venture Labs, you name them, or even Regions, a company that might not be a tech company, but that has a large tech footprint. They could send those junior-level talent individuals to the Innovation Depot, or wherever we locate this, and then go through training, and to your point about certi- uh, certificates, that's something that we're going to be working out again, that's an assumption that we're going to have to validate. We have to make sure that whatever credential we provide at the end of this, the industry not just recognizes it, but places value on it as well, and so you, you'll probably hear a lot of talk about micro-credentials. Um, and I think a lot of industry is moving toward that, and education as well, uh, as we start to look more at a skills-based, um, economy versus one where you're just hired, because if you, you've completed a four-year degree, it's going to be more skills-based. Um, so that's where we're going, but we still have to make sure that industry is willing to take, uh, those micro-credentials and those certificates, um, uh, as substitute credit, uh, if you will, the, all indication is that they, they will do that. Um, but again, we want to validate those assumptions, so that's a long-winded way of saying, training program, and then we'll figure out what that credential-y, um, process is going to look like at the end, when the industry recognizes. That was it, did that answer, I'm s-
Yeah, like, how would someone know that they had graduated to a senior-level person, that they used to be a junior level, what did they do to become a senior level? You know, what, what?
Yeah, what's the missing one, what are we, yeah.
Yeah, what added value will they latch on to to become that senior person?
Absolutely, so, so one of, one of the, um, missing components i- is. Absolutely. So, so one of, one of the, um, missing components i- is, is mentorship. Um, so if I'm a junior-level programmer or engineer or a project manager, I need somebody who's done it before to help guide me. So that's one of the key components of it. Um, there's the curriculum aspect, that is almost a, you know, rinse, wash, repeat, where we're just giving you, uh, you know, protocols and policies, things of that nature. But the mentorship piece is going to be critical. Uh, and then another is an opportunity or safe space to fail. Uh, basically, if I am a junior-level programmer, I'm going to make some mistakes, but I need to know that it's not done in a mission-critical environment. And so figuring out what companies need to provide that space as well. And so that's where we're going to try to figure out where the rubber meets the road, because, um, you can obviously say, well, a company like Shipt could easily do this themselves. You know, why would they go to an outside partner or outside collaborative, um, uh, project, if you will, to fill in that gap? But it might be one of those things where we're better together if they can say, you know, right now, we are focusing on these mission-critical items. This isn't necessarily it, for whatever reason, cost, time. If you all can do this in partnership with Regions, with the Landing, now we have the benefit of coming together and identifying some best practices. And so a lot of those learnings don't just live in silos. We can actually start moving the needle as an ecosystem, because a practical example, we wouldn't want for somebody like Shipt to say, we know, and they don't require this, but we're going to remove the requirement for a four-year degree, um, to open the talent pool. But if ninety percent of their contemporaries don't do it, we really haven't moved the nee- we moved the needle for Shipt, but we haven't moved it for the entire ecosystem, which is why we think it's important to have something that brings them all together.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, um, for that explanation, and just want to give out a shout-out to, um, Maria Underwood from Birmingham Bound, who, um, you know, Birmingham bound has the, the mission of, uh, recruiting and retaining, uh, tech talent in companies here in the city of Birmingham. It's part of our, uh, strategic economic development strategy. And, um, in conversation with Ms. Underwood, um, you know, she, she noted that one of the major challenges to, uh, growing the tech sector here in Birmingham, as you mentioned, was being able to fill those senior-level positions. Um, and that being, you know, as you also mentioned, on the heels of training two hundred and, uh, no, nine hundred and twenty-seven, I think it was, um, uh, entry-level developers through the Innovate Birmingham project. Um, this, you know, seemed to be a natural progression, uh, as part of that initiative. So thank you for coming this morning, providing a explanation of the project.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Thank you for, um, lifting up Maria. Also lift up, uh, Abby and, and Trevor Newberry, Berry over at Harmony Venture Labs. Mysha Hutchison and Chris Hatcher had to deal a lot with me as well navigating the process, so just again, thank you all for the support.
All right, Madam Clark, I think we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. Next item?
The next item is on page five, is item number nine. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents required for the city to complete a grant with the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration for the Advanced Transportation Technologies and Innovative Mobility Deployment Program and accept grant fund disbursement to the city of Birmingham in the amount of up to five million dollars for the purpose of supporting signal improvements along ten key corridors throughout the city with a twenty percent or one million dollars grant throughout the city with a twenty, I'm sorry, grant match required from the city to be funded with money received by the City from the American Rescue Plan Act.
Any discussion of these items? Uh, okay, thank you, Counsel Williams, for that question. I actually asked that during committee meeting, uh, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting yesterday, too. Um, so Counsel Williams' question is, which ten corridors? And in preference to, uh, I assume, um, a BDOT member coming to address that question. Um, they weren't able to answer it yesterday. Okay. Okay.
Answer, ma'am.
So, um... Right, okay. Just a note, these are, uh, will be city-street corridors, not, uh, state or federal highways. Um, so just keep that in context.
That's right, uh, yes, sir. So my name is James Fowler. I serve as the Director of the City's Department of Transportation. Um, and so that's correct. So the intent of this grant application is to apply for five million dollars in funding to help us restore communication lines, uh, on ten corridors. Um, so I'll list those. So University Boulevard, uh, Greensprings Avenue, and also Greensprings Highway. Um, and then, uh, a, a few corridors that are linked together, but, uh, MLK, uh, Sixth Avenue, uh, Goldwire and Loam Avenues, that's actually part of the BRT corridor. So we made some signal improvements locally at some of those intersections, but they're still not necessarily tied together. Uh, so this would help tie those together. Uh, some sections of Fifth Avenue South Downtown, also Sixth Avenue in South Downtown, uh, Twenty-second Street, um, particularly on the south side. And then, uh, both Richard Arr- Richard Arrington Jr. on the north side and the south side, and then also Twentieth Street Ensley. So those are the ten corridors, uh, that we've pulled forward. Uh, one of the reasons we're not focusing on, uh, state routes, even though we do maintain those signals, is because they are already upgrading communications and signal equipment along many of their corridors as a part of their RTOP program, uh, which stands for Regional Traffic Operations Program. Uh, so these are locally-controlled streets. Five million dollars is, uh, generous, uh, for this project, so, uh, we're hopeful that we can, uh, do a little bit more, uh, but those are the corridors.
Counsel Williams?
So, um, Director Fowler, i- it, e- educate me on this. Is the, so in, in the, in BDOT's office space, um, brand-new office space and all that brand-new equipment y'all have that does all the traffic signals?
Sarcasm.
Is, is that what's tying, it's tying back into that?
Yeah, great question. So, um, there are many things that we could invest in and improve with the city's traffic signal system. So at each intersection, there's a, a computer in a box, so that's a controller in a cabinet. Um, but one of the things, kind of a foundational element, that allows us to do signal timing and coordinate the signals is communication. So the signals have to talk to each other, and then they also have to talk back to City Hall. Um, and so even if the computers at each intersection is a little antiquated, uh, we feel like a good foundational investment is to just make sure that all those signals can talk to each other and can talk back to City Hall. So we have the Traffic Control Center upstairs on the ninth floor. Uh, but, because, um, to your point about the systems being antiquated, uh, it's probably been maybe twenty years since we've applied for a grant of this scale, uh, for the signal system specifically. Uh, so a lot of that infrastructure is outdated, um, but this would pull us forward a good bit. So, uh, we used to be able to communicate from City Hall with these traffic signals, but just over the years with construction and storms and other things, it's that, uh, communication lines have deteriorated. So this helps us restore, uh, that communication system.
These are physical lines?
Uh, that's right. So, uh, Birmingham, uh, had a very robust, uh, traffic signal system, probably the most robust in the state at one time. And so the way that we used to, uh, be able to communicate with the signals was through copper phone lines, uh, actually, you know, just like an old modem. Then some of the, uh, corridors got upgraded to fiber, um, but, uh, but most did not. So we kind of have this hodgepodge patchwork, and some of them work and some of them don't, uh, so it's, it's not as functional as it once was.
All right, is, is the, is the norm not cellular now?
So, that's a great question. Uh, so there's some pros and cons, uh, with, uh, each version of the system. So, um, fiber can carry the most data. So, uh, we were talking yesterday in Transportation Committee about video capability, for example. Um, so a system, so we'll have to go through a design phase, but a system that probably is likely where we will land is we'll have some fiber-optic corridors that branch out from City Hall to certain areas of the city. And then, and that'll take us maybe out to a hub, and then from that hub, it splits off into, maybe it's wireless or cellular, uh, or in some cases, we might choose to do fiber or Ethernet, uh, but a mixture of those, depending on where it's at and what the needs are specifically.
Okay, and so this would get us out to City Hall to the, what would, what, what you said would be a hub, right?
So, um, uh, it'd be nice to have, uh, for example, a communications hub in Ensley, for example. And so we could do a number of things from there. Um, another question that came up, so currently, we own and maintain our own, um, fiber lines, but we're not a utilities company. And so a likely scenario for us moving forward would be to, um, develop a contract with a communications company that they can maintain and operate that fiber line, and we're just using some space on their system. Uh, so that would get us out to different points in the city, and then from there, we'd kind of branch out.
Okay, and then my second, um, part of this questioning is the, what y'all have upstairs that, that controls the traffic lights, um, that you know, expressed, I'm convinced, does not work. Um, it, so if we invest this five million dollars, it's still going back to that same equipment that was around before I was born, right? And so, and that can handle? I mean, like, you know, we were using a, like, it was pre-dial-up modem, so, um, so that can handle what this five million dollars investment is?
Uh, in a sense, yes. Uh, we do need to make some upgrades there as well. But the reason I say, uh, yes, is because we've got existing software, though it's outdated. We've got, um, existing servers, though they're outdated. But because there's no communication to the signals out in the field, we can't even use the outdated systems that we've got. Uh, so we have other plans, and we'll probably be pursuing other grants to upgrade, uh, the traffic management center upstairs as well. That's a great question, um, because, you know, the two servers are antiquated, and, and we do need to invest in, uh, new software. Um, but just more to come in the future. To give you a sense of scale, uh, because we've built such a robust, uh, transportation system, uh, if we were going to replace and upgrade everything in the city, uh, with our signal system, just the signal system, the way that we probably think it should work, um, and the way maybe perhaps we imagine that it works, uh, it would probably cost us about a hundred million dollars. And so this five-million-dollar investment is just kind of a foundational step in the direction. But we'll need to think about, you know, how we rebuild going forward.
And this would help the issue with all the downtown, this grant would?
It'll help, uh, several of the corridors.
With what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Just so you know, an hour ago, I got a text that said, "Good, fix the expletive stoplights downtown. It's not that hard to get th- time, so you don't get stuck at every single block." Blah, 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 and some other things that probably aren't appropriate about. But also Forty-first Street and First Avenue, um, there apparently is some issue with that light as well, because I've gotten a lot of texts and calls about that, just so you know. If there's not going to be fiber going out there, maybe a crew could go out there and look at it.
So that's a state route, um, and so if, if there's an, an issue with that signal, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you. Um, this is exciting. Um, I, I had a couple of questions. One is about the one million dollars match. Is it already in a GL code somewhere, so we, or are we also setting it aside with this vote? We've already approved it, and that's?
Mr. President? Yes.
Chief Mitchell?
Sorry. It's, it's noted in the, the item, it's ARPA funding, that the council already approved a grant match.
Okay, so we've already approved the grant match, so it's sitting aside. It's already allocated. The other question is about, because I have no idea how this works, but, um, you know, I was just kind of inspired by the other conversation, you know, when we do have storms, as you mentioned, a lot of times the lights aren't out, they're just flashing red or yellow. And I believe everybody's forgotten what the driver's test that you're supposed to do, and, you know, proceed with caution in the yellow and actually stop. And it, it always gets treated like a four-way stop, but, and that's aggravating for me, because, you know, anyway. Wanted to just, um, ask you, operationally, what happens when those are flashing during a storm? Do you get an indicator to then go and reset those, or?
It's a great question. If the communication lines are working, we do get an indication. So, uh, so we used to rely on that heavily, um, many years ago, when the communication system was more robust. Uh, today, we mostly rely on calls, and we do get a lot of calls, and, um, um, and we'll also, when a storm like last night happens, it's, uh, you know, all hands on deck that morning, the next morning after, to go out and reset those. Um, but, uh, with this investment, we'll be a little bit better prepared and able to respond.
So is your team activated in EMA for, like, things like last night? Are you all, or, or do you all just work eight to five? Like, should we be calling you when we see lights flashing after five o'clock?
That's a, a great question. So, um, a lot of people call 911, um, actually, and so they will call. We have people on-call twenty-four-seven, so, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, uh, to go out and address issues. So, uh, usually when a storm like last night happens, uh, we'll have multiple people just already out, um, you know, at night, going ahead and resetting things. Yes, ma'am. Um, but, um, but folks, uh, typically, you can call 311, or you can call 911. Um, that's probably not the preferred route, but a lot of people do that.
So maybe the non-emergency, um...
Yes.
Contact, yeah. I mean, I know we couldn't call, we shouldn't call you, but I'm just thinking, you know, after hours for 311 and after hours for the city staff, police non-emergency will get it into some kind of queue.
Non-em- that non-emergency number is definitely helpful for situations like this. That information gets routed up.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Mister?
Thank you, Mr. President. Did you want to say something?
Very quickly, um, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor?
Just to put a bow on, um, your colleague's question, um, Ms. Clark, or Counselor Clark, in situations, most of the time, not necessarily last night, but we activate SWIFT. And so there, um, his department is automatically looped in on issues to respond to, which in, what would include traffic signal lights.
Okay. Counselor Smith?
Uh, thank you. Um, can we get a list of those streets? Because it seems like majority of them are in my district, um, but it's, it's already in here? Okay, well, um, it's an email? Oh, they just sent it, okay. Well, thank you. Um, and I really do appreciate it, because I feel like I use a lot of these streets every day. I do notice a delay. Um, and Greensprings is very, very, um, very, very well-used, University Boulevard with the students, so. And I am glad to know that we're supposed to call 311, because I noticed this weekend, a lot of lights downtown were out for a long time, like, two days. And so, um, hopefully this can help this out and help the flow of traffic, too, especially, um, off of Sixth Avenue, where there's a, um, bike lane and just a regular lane as well. So I'm excited to see this happening. Um, thank you, Mr. Fowler, for everything you've done. I think you've been here about, what, four, five, six?
Five years.
Five years. I'm definitely seeing improvement in transportation in Birmingham. Thank you.
Counselor Abbott?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to know if this new fiber or whatever we're end up using, will it be below ground? Or are we still going to be hanging it on utility poles?
It'll vary by the corridor. Um, so, uh, in some corridors, uh, it's overhead, but, uh, downtown, most likely, it's underground. Um, and again, what we will probably do is contract with a utility company to get space on their existing network. Um, so hopefully, we're not running a lot of new fiber communication lines. Um, and in some cases, uh, we can use, uh, wireless communication between signals. Um, so it'll vary across the city, but hopefully, we're not, the city of Birmingham is not installing a lot of new communication lines ourselves. We may have a few, but, um, trying not to do too much of that.
It's kind of out of our wheelhouse anyway, so, thank you.
Counselor Moore?
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, to you again. Uh, I know we were able to get that light put on, uh, Taren Huffman I know we were able to get that light put on Tarrant Huffman Road. I'm glad to know that, you know, I need to tell people to, you know, send, send their concerns to three-one-one when they see the lights flashing, because like Councilor Williams, I got texts as well, as we've been sitting up here. And so, they have been, you know, extremely excited about it, and so just wanted to tell you thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to get some appreciation for how the city was operated prior to Councilor Williams' birth. So, I'd like to go up to that traffic control center in BDOT and take a look.
Oh, you haven't been?
No, I haven't.
Oh, it's cool. It's like, it's pretty cool, actually. I think it's cool.
It is cool.
Um, I was gonna ask Ms. Abbott, do you remember, I remember, you and I are like the oldest people up here. But do you remember leaving downtown or entering downtown that, particularly on the one ways, that traffic lights used to be pretty coordinated? One turned green, they all turned green, one turned red, they all turned red. In the ideal world, we can get back there.
Yeah, I, I remember the neighborhood officers were invited to see the room with all its new equipment in it a number of years ago, probably before you were born.
Yeah, I think my birth announcement went out that same invitation. But I also would like to go back and look at that, at, at the relic on the ninth floor, and so, when you go please.
It doesn't look like a relic, it looks nice.
I've been once. Beauty is an eye of the beholder.
Probably all steampunk, you know, pipes and copper wires everywhere, gauges, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Appreciate your summary of this. No additional comments or questions, I think we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item passes. Thank you, next item.
That completes the agenda.
All right. This time, we will have presentations from the council districts. Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, District Eight neighborhood meetings, the Bellevue Heights neighborhood will meet today at six-thirty at Brown Elementary School. And the Central Park neighborhood will meet this Thursday at six P.M. at Five Points West Library. Also, the Rising West Princeton neighborhood canceled its meeting last night. They've rescheduled it for Thursday, January eighteenth, at six P.M. in the community center office in Rising West Princeton. Jefferson County Environmental Services will have a series of public engagement meetings to provide overviews of upcoming sewer overflow mitigation projects. Each meeting will start at six P.M. with a short presentation on the construction impacts in the area. Then, they will answer questions about the work. The first meeting is January twenty-second at the Enslie Recreation Center, again, at six P.M. Anyone not able to attend the meeting can review the project information at the Jefferson County Environmental Services Office during normal business hours. Also, if Santa brought you some new electronics, you can make room for them by bringing your old ones to an electronics drop-off day and paper shredding event on January twenty-seventh, nine A.M. to eleven-thirty A.M. at the Birmingham Zoo. These events are free for residents of Jefferson County. Please place the materials in the trunk of your car or the bed of your, bed of your truck and secure them. Remain in your vehicle while dropping off the materials, there will be event workers taking care of it. All paper will be shredded on-site, but please make sure it's free of binder clips. All computer hard drives will be destroyed by the event partner, Protech Recycling. Also, and finally, if you're up for a brisk walk in the cool weather, we look for it to be at least forty degrees by eight, by eight A.M. On those Thursdays, please come out to the Starbucks at the Crossflex and join District Eight neighbors for a morning walk. We meet up at about five minutes till eight and do a one-and-a-half-mile loop, and all paces are welcome. That concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to invite everybody to a screening of the documentary film, The Right to Read, hosted by Alabama Public Television, A-plus Education Partnerships, Birmingham Talks, Teach for America Alabama, Alabama Humanities Alliance, and Birmingham Corp. This, this screening will take place Tuesday, January thirtieth, at five P.M. at Sidewalk Cinema. The Right to Read is a powerful documentary highlighting the importance of literacy and the challenges, challenges faced by those struggling to read. If you would like to attend, please reach out to Jason Meadows at jason@apl.org to attend this much-needed documentary. We also have, this Thursday, I mean, it's already been stated that you can have coffee with the code enforcement at Darn Hawkins Rec Center in Roebuck from ten A.M. to noon. And so, make sure that you take advantage of being there. Want to join, if you would like to join, you serve at the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute for a Day of Service on Monday, January fifteenth, honoring Dr. King. This will be open to youth volunteers, ages thirteen through eighteen, to serve. They can join from one to three P.M. or three to five P.M. Let me see. So, neighborhood associations that'll be taking place, we have Kilo Springs and Northeast Lake, as well as Penfield Park, that will be taking place today at six P.M. Kilo Springs will be at Smith Middle. Northeast Lake will be at Southern Museum of Flight. And Penfield Park will have their meeting at Brownsville Heights Community Center. The community development meeting will take place next, yeah, next Wednesday at two P.M. on January the seventeenth. If you would like to enter any submissions, please email Terry Chapman at terry.chapman@birminghamal.gov. And last but not least, cannot forget to let everyone know that Park and Recs is hiring for lifeguards now through May tenth. So, if you would like to get more information about how to become a lifeguard, please reach out to Terry Sewell, not our congresswoman, at two-zero-five-two-five-four-two-one-eight-nine, or two-zero-five-two-five-four-two-three-nine-one. And that concludes the announcements.
All right, thank you, Councilor Moore. I want to second the recommendation for seeing the, the Right to Read film. There was two screenings recently, one in Phillips Academy and another one in Fairfield. I was able to go to the Fairfield screening. And my impression of the film is that, given the, you know, importance of that particular subject matter in the city of Birmingham at the moment, it's probably one of the most important films that a citizen of Birmingham could potentially view at this time. So, definitely, definitely highly recommend it. So, thank you. Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next planning and zoning meeting is tomorrow at three-thirty in the council chambers. The neighborhood association meetings in District Three for tonight, East Avondale has canceled their meeting, but Highland Park will have a meeting at Highland Park Golf Course in the conference room. And it also will be held hybrid for the people who don't want to come out in the weather. If you have any concerns or issues with, I guess it's the physical plant of the city. I was reminded the other day that my Beham three-one-one, N-three-one-one, is not for the police issues. You should call the police non-emergency number to report all those people parked on the sidewalks and in the rights of way and all that. So, the other thing, we want this, people in District Three to go to our website for all of the announcements that we don't have time to make in this little three minutes we have. So, that for District Three is my Beh, no, excuse me, behamdistrictthree.com. And all those people in District Three who are putting garbage out in, you know, in non, non-city cans need to shape up and piling it next to them, piling it on top of them. You know, I realize they're picking it up now, but they're going to stop eventually. And those folks, there are a whole lot of them that are doing that, and it's gonna stop. So, get your act together.
Thank you, Councilor Abbott. Councilor Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be quick, because it's almost, uh, noon. We only have two neighborhood meetings this week. It's South Tissville at five-thirty at Holy Family High School, and then Orleans and West Dan at six P.M., and that will be at West Dan Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Pres, thank you, Mr. President. Couple announcements here. One, I did want to clarify that I wasn't happy that it was my last meeting on planning and zoning, and just that you remember your first and your last. But did want to make sure to clarify that, let me find this announcement here. Yeah, I'm trying to find it. All right, so we will be on Monday, our MLK Day of Service, we're partnering with Black Warrior River Keeper, and we'll be at Rebirth Christian Fellowship Church at nine A.M. That's Monday, January fifteenth. Doing community cleanup, also working the community garden. And so, if you want to come out, ring your group, participate in the Day of Service as we honor the legacy of MLK. Definitely welcome to come out. Again, that's January fifteenth, Monday morning, nine A.M. at Rebirth Christian Fellowship. To sign up, you can visit www-blackwarriorriver.org. Love to have you. Also, just reiterate that the Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association meets tonight at Smith Middle School at six P.M. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first request I have is to please work on getting the air, the temperature controlled in here. It is very cold, and it is very uncomfortable, and I do not want to catch the flu.
You hear that, Chief Mitchell? Okay.
So, all you hot-natured people, bring your little fan with you. Wileham Neighborhood Association, we're having their cleanup on Monday, January fifteenth at nine A.M. Nine to twelve participants will meet at Seventeen Bank Street. So, that's in partnership with, we'll be out cleaning up with Wileham as well, celebrating the King Day. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight at six P.M. on conference lines. You can dial in three-one-nine-five-two-seven-nine-six-four-two. North Pratt Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight. New Haven Apartments at Thirteenth Avenue W, and that is in Birmingham, three-five-two-one-four. Oak Ridge Neighborhood will meet on Thursday, January eleventh, at four P.M. And they also, you can call in on conference call at nine-five-two-two-zero-six-four-nine-one-eight. Code two-two-three-four-one-eight. Hoover City Neighborhood will meet on Thursday at six P.M. at the Hoover Center Rec Center. And the next public safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, January the twenty-third at one P.M. Please submit agenda items via email by Wednesday, January the seventeenth, no later than twelve noon to patrice.collins@birmingham.gov, Gregory Stanley, Gregory Stanley@BirminghamAL.gov. Also, public safety meeting is also today at one o'clock in the chamber today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tate. Councilor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Roebuck Springs Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday at seven o'clock at New Beginning Church, the regular spot. And a special congrats to all of the winners of the essay contest that is done every year. And the winners get to attend for free the Unity Breakfast on Monday. So, it's something that the Roebuck Springs Neighborhood has done for W.J. Christian every year. So, congrats to the lucky winners this year. And I know that thoughts need to go out to, while, actually, while we were in this meeting, someone lost their life in District Two on a tree that fell across Crestwood Boulevard. So, as that situation unfolds, what a tragic, what a tragic thing to be going to school or work and, and have that happen. So, thoughts and prayers to that, to that family. That's all I got.
All right. Councilor Clark, you had something that you missed.
Yes, thank you. In honor of the ML King holiday, the Central Library will host a program called Remember with J.C.M.P., Reckoning with the Jim Crow South. More than thirty-three people were lynched in Jefferson County between eighteen eighty-three and nineteen forty. They were victims of racial terror in the segregated post-war South, and their stories have mostly been lost. So, as we observe the King Weekend and societal movement to further civil and human rights, the Central Library invites you to remember them. This happens on Saturday, January thirteenth, from eleven to one o'clock in the Lynn Henley Fourth Floor Arrington Auditorium. That's it, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Pretim Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know how my voice is going, but I, I was told I was a little loud last week. Is the volume okay? Thank you. These are the announcements for District Seven. Today, the Administration and Government Affairs Committee will meet at two P.M. in the council chambers. We also have two neighborhood meetings today. The East Brownsville Neighborhood will meet via conference call at five-thirty, and the Riley Trebalik Neighborhood will meet at Noble Chapel CME Church, and that's at thirty-seven-hundred Maple Avenue Southwest at six P.M. On Wednesday, January tenth, there's bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled for the Oxmore Valley Neighborhood or Sand Ridge area. Thursday, January eleventh, the West Brownsville Neighborhood Association will meet via conference call at ten A.M. And the Roosevelt Neighborhood will meet in the Roosevelt Community Center at fifty-eight oh-four Higgin Avenue Southwest at eleven A.M. And then on Friday, January twelfth, bulk trash and brush pickup is scheduled for Jermania Park North. I just want to also note that Caleb Nevison, our neighborhood liaison and I, we are marked safe from attending the neighborhood meetings last night in the torrential rain and the wind. So, we're very grateful to be here with you today. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. For, on behalf of District Five, we have three neighborhoods meetings this week. Gate City Neighborhood Association will meet via phone call, phone conference tonight. This is a one-time rescheduling for the association meeting, which normally happens on the second Monday. Please contact our office for the call-in number. Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association was also canceled yesterday and will be rescheduled for next week. Please contact our office later this week to get the rescheduled date and time. Smithfield Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, January eleventh, at six P.M. at the Smithfield Court Community Center. Urban Impact will host a Martin Luther King Day Day of Service on Monday, January fifteenth, at eight A.M. in the historic Fourth Avenue Business District, located at seventeen-twenty-one Fourth Avenue North, Suite one-oh-two. Again, that's eight A.M. on Monday. The Transportation Committee will meet Monday, January twenty-second, at two P.M. in the council chambers. Items can be submitted to the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.philips@birminghamal.gov. And finally, and really finally, for the last time, the Birmingham Water Works Board has one vacant board position. Anyone interested in this position should email your resume and letter of interest to kimberlyphillips@kimberly.philips@birminghamal.gov by Friday, January twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. And that concludes my announcements. Back to, Madam Clark, it's my understanding that the person that signed up for the public speakers list has since departed?
I, I think so, I don't see them. So, there's no speakers.
Okay, there's no speakers. Okay, there's no speakers. So I think that brings us to.
Mr. President, before.
Oh, yes. Thank you for the reminder. I'm just kind of like.
It is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so I think it's apt to thank the officers.
Yes, thank you to our officers on duty. Your presence was especially appreciated this morning. We have today Cedric Pinkard, who's in the Downtown Office, Labana Williams from South Precinct, and the well-named Darrell Freeman from South Precinct. Thank you for being here.
Mr. President, before we close out, I neglected to say that this is the second announcement for a vacancy on the Birmingham Planning Commission. We need some members who can actually attend, so, you know, anyone who's interested and has a little extra time for public service will be appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Williams.
I have a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?